Ninety-seven-nine, the box, the man had a morning show. Councilman Jordan is in the studio. The artist formerly known as Scarface.
Yeah, funny.
I called him up and I said, "I will no longer call you Scarface, Face Ma, Brad, you're now Councilman Jordan."
He went through the whole thing, like, it was always like, damn.
He just laughed, he just laughed.
I'm not gonna call you Face, I'm not gonna call you Facebook. I'm not gonna call you this, I'm not gonna call you that. I'm talking about along, I'm not even gonna call you DJ Action. He went through all my names.
He went back to DJ Action. I forgot about the DJ Action show, did.
Yeah, I'm not gonna call you Simon Pottin no more. I was like, damn, how it was, dog?
I have to respect this new title, man. A lot of people don't, they're trying to understand. I don't really want to talk about rap with Scarface today. Y'all mad about me about that?
No.
Okay. I want to talk totally about politics. And of course, I'll mention one of his old groupmates, but before we get there, why did you wake up one morning and finally decide, "I want to work for the city of Houston in this capacity"?
Well, I always, um, I always, I love to give back to the city that gave so much to me. First and foremost, uh, I'm not all over Instagram and all over, you know, social media showing what I do.
Yes, sir.
But just know that I do.
That's right.
All right? So, to, 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 you know, Dwight's my partner. And for him to vacate that seat, it's already been in the making, Hatta. So for him to vacate that seat, and, 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 what better time than now to jump in?
So when you're-
I was gonna wait four years. Not to cut you off, but I was gonna wait four years until he finished his last term to get my feet up under me. But that four years turned into, you know, twenty-four hours because I found out that he was gonna go ahead and run. When I asked the question, "Should I run for city council?", and everybody was overwhelmingly, overwhelming response like, I was like, damn. You know, maybe people was looking for a change, man, that the, 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 the way that they do politics, man, that, that whole way of doing politics is over, man. It's new blood now, man, like I say.
Now, a lot of people don't know the political side of the rapper Scarface, Councilman Jordan. So where did this, for those who don't know, where did this come from, this involvement? Because you're right, like you said, you don't post up, I'm in your community doing A, B, C, D, E, M, G, because you don't have to do that. So some people don't know about this. So where did the desire come from for some, all of a sudden, to want to do this?
I started, well, I've started a nonprofit called The Positive Purpose Movement. And my, my, my goal was to employ, uh, nonviolent offenders, the second chance, you know, giving them a second chance, man. And I got a chance to see how this really works. I mean, being around, um, uh, the senator, uh, and then being around a council member, being around a mayor, I'm getting, I'm getting to look at how everything is working from the inside. Right? I always, I've always had the view from the outside, but now I'm inside and I'm looking, I'm like, wow. So, okay, if, if they do this, then that's not working, I know how to fix that. You know, like, it's, it's different solutions, man. And then, and then to put, to have money to make these different solutions. Excuse me. I've been talking my ass off.
I know, you're a councilman.
Yeah.
You're running for something, there's gonna be a lot of talking.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to rest my- But man, you know, i- i- it's a lot to say that you can do stuff with donations and your own money, but when you have a budget to do stuff, then you can get, you can get things done, man.
But there's a lot of red tape and you know the politics.
There's a lot of red tape.
You do realize what's, see, what often happens is a guy like you, they come in, they got all these fresh ideas, and all these things they want to do. And then they find out, uh, politics, councilman.
You can't do politics with me. No, no, no.
But soon as you come in, this is what you gonna have to go through. They gonna like, they gonna be like, "Mr. Jordan, we can't do, we can't do that. Here's how we always have done it." That's what you gonna hear, trust me, I'm just saying. This is how we've always done it. So, and they gonna say, "You can't come in and change the way we've always traditionally done it, Mr. Jordan, or you gonna create enemies."
That's fine, too.
You ready for that?
I'm, I'm, I'm cool with creating an enemy.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm down with what's right. So if creating an enemy, you know, if I create an enemy from being right, then I, I, I'd love to have that enemy.
Okay.
Because I know I'm right.
Okay.
All right, and, and it's not about what I want, it's about what the community want, bro. I'm not gonna go in there and assume that the community wants me to, you know, put some cows and, 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 and throw some frizzers out, I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna go, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna see what the community, the community and see what they want. You know what I mean? I'm not gonna make decisions for the community, I'm gonna ask the community, and then we gonna come up with solutions, bro.
What's, what's one thing that you personally would like to see happen?
I would like to see-
They gonna ask you what your platform is.
Yeah, I mean, I got a, I got a platform and it's a, it's a lot of things that I'm looking to, to, to start addressing and, and fixing. I don't want to just point fingers at the problem. I want to give solutions for this. Like, first and foremost, let's look at the flooding situation in that area. My grandma, you know, well, her, her street ain't really flooding no more, but over in that area like that, it's floods. So I want to see what's happening. Is the, is the drain, is the drains, uh, clogged up? Like, what's happening in there? Do we need to dig? Do we need to do some more digging? Um, uh, let's see, what else I want to talk about, uh-
The ci- the city has a lot of issues and a lot of problems.
How would you handle this firefighter issue that's going on in the city right now?
Hey, 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 I'm not the mayor, bro.
No, but it's, it's not a mayoral thing, it's city council members have to deal with that.
Well, here's the thing, this is the smartest thing to do, man. Let, uh, well, I mean, it's already been voted on now.
Right.
All right, well-
There's a lot of lawsuits going back and forth, too, where you keep sending in.
I, I mean, me-
And you gonna be in a lot of sticky situations just like this, sir.
The smartest, for me, the smartest thing to do is sit down and talk to both parties and see if we can work it out like that.
Right.
Like that, 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 I'm always, and that's, that's the best way to solve things, in my opinion. Is to sit down with both parties and, and talk it out and try to come up with a-
But if you cannot.
Yeesh.
And, and sometimes that's what happens.
We gonna shut the meeting down, then we gonna start again tomorrow. You know, but I'm not gonna take it upon myself to do none of that. Like, some kind of way, we gonna come up with an agreement, or we gonna be in this room for weeks at a time.
Oftentimes, Councilman, because I'm trying to get used to saying that.
Say it.
Uh, you gonna have to, there's gonna be some sides that you gonna have to choose. Like, your boy Boykins, he's running for mayor. They gonna ask you, okay-
Is his side right?
Depends who you ask, right?
Yeah, it depends on who you ask and what you want. Because somebody be like, uh, Boykins running for mayor, is, I'm gonna need everything that he is talking about. Others will say, "I love everything that, uh, Sylvester has done, uh, Mayor Turner has done", and they gonna be on that. And then they gonna come to you, "Well, Mr. Jordan, what do you think?" Because they gonna, because I know you know both of these gentlemen, they gonna ask you, your point of view on, on both of these individuals.
I, 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 I love both of the, um, I love both of the, uh, the council member and the mayor. You know, I, I like what, what, uh, Sylvester Turner has done for this city. I love how he stood up in the crisis when we had Harvey, like, he stepped right into that role. You know, I love what, uh, Dwight Boykins has, has done for my community. You know what I mean? So, as far as race is concerned, I'm out of that. Like, they, they gotta fight that, they gotta do that they sell.
Okay.
All right? And, and whoever the mayor is, at the end of the day, that's up for the, that's up for the people to decide, and that's the person that I'll, you know, sit down and, and, yeah, for sure.
Well, I did, I did some research, speaking of your race, is there anybody running against you now? I mean, I was trying to find if-
Oh, everybody in the country want to run against me now.
I know, but is there anybody who's filed for District D also? Because I didn't see anything unless I-
I don't know. I mean, it, 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 they probably will, they should. You know, I don't want to go uncontested.
Oh, Councilman, there's also the other thing that's at stake here, money. Whenever you run for these political offices, it comes down to, you know, sometimes who has the deepest pocket. That's something else that, you know, you have to be prepared for in these kind of battles.
Now he wants to run on a-
So, so what-
That little boy that was dancing on the thing.
So what happens, so what happens when it gets to that, you know?
Let's, let's just say this, I got a lot of rich friends.
Wow, he just came out and said it. That boy said he got rich friends.
And do they, and they love you, they like to play golf with you, but will they support you as council?
Here's, here's your question, here's, here's the question.
He going to his phone, y'all.
I got two hundred and forty-seven thousand legitimate people on my Instagram.
Okay.
All right? I got two hundred and fifty-something thousand on my Twitter. All right? If I ask those half a million people, can I get ten to five thousand dollars? You think somebody gonna shoot me something?
Hmm, I don't know.
How can I get twenty-five?
Oh, snap, okay, that's true.
No, you gotta donate it to my campaign.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
No, I'm just saying, man, it's not gonna be-
So you're not gonna go, so are you gonna go to the people and ask for the, for them to be a part of the campaign? Or are you asking for your friends that you know have always supported you, or it'd be a mixture of both?
I'm gonna ask-
It's gonna come down to money, right? I, I mean-
It's gonna definitely come down to money, and I'm, I'm gonna ask my friends, and I'm gonna ask,
The people.
You know, the people, that's important to me, bro. I want to ask the people.
Also say, uh, Councilman, it's gonna be some hard questions, and people gonna ask you to pick sides, you know, uh, and like I said, there'll be a lot of people that don't know that you even into politics, that, you know, has he ever voted, uh, how deep into politics he goes.
Very.
And a lot of these questions will, will be coming up. So it's kind of interesting to see, I'm, I, I just feel like an individual, as you grow, you get, get older, your concerns-
Yeah, my concerns, my concerns is safety. You know, for the, for the senior citizens. My concern is second chance, like the reentry programs for, 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 um, um, nonviolent offenders. You know what I mean? Like, we, we really want to put the people back to work. And I feel like if I'm putting together, um, you know, cleaning up, beautifying the place, um, I can hire those nonviolent offenders to cut their grass, to, to move that trash, to, you know, help me take down these abandoned, um, structures, clean it up, like, let's, let, and, and take pride in your community, bro. That way, that way, you not out there on the streets trying to sell, you know, dope, trying to rob nobody, I got you working. And that's more important than anything, to have a livable wage. Like, that's work, bro.
Now, here's the other thing with politics, too, because it can be funky sometimes.
Well, I think you need to run, you might need to jump in the race with it.
No, 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 not today.
Nah, messing with you.
No, but listen, it can be, you know, when people start running against you, it gets, it can get muddy. And people start slaying, you know, they gonna hold against you, you're a rapper.
That's fine.
Anything in your past, they gonna pull it up.
And they should, they should.
They gonna bring up past, whatever they can find, they gonna throw it at you.
They should.
That's why I was like, so surprised, because that's why I couldn't run, because they gonna try to find everything out about you.
They should.
And they gonna, and they gonna throw it in your face to remind you of your past.
And they should.
Of what you might not be no more, Councilman.
And I still might be.
Okay.
You never know.
Right.
But that does not change the fact that I want to help out in my district. You can sling mud on me all you want to.
Yes, sir.
But if that has anything to do with the way that I run my district,
All right.
Then hold me accountable. You know what I mean? Like, like, then, then, then punish me for that, like, you let this get in the way of, no. No, man, if, if my, my, if, if my private, personal life is affecting the way I do my business at city council, then, yeah, it's a problem. Call me out. But as long as, my private life ain't got nothing to do with the way I handle my, my district, bro.
Okay.
All right?
So you running for-
Good try.
You running for that? And I, I, I have to mention, okay, because I said I would go back to this. Member of the Ghetto Boys, Bushwick Bill, uh, just passed recently. Just your thoughts on that, and, you know, this iconic group? Because it is an iconic group.
Bruh. So, the, 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 the true story is this, and let me, let me say this. If you know, if you know Oki, if you know Bill, then you know Bill got a buddy named Oki. Right? This is at what time?
Eight oh six AM.
Okay. This is the message that I got at eight oh six AM.
Hey, Brad, man, I just got the word, uh, Bill dead, bro. Call me if you want to talk to me, baby.
So when you, I'm just getting off a plane coming from Michigan. And when you get on the, when you, you know, your phone come back on and you hear, you go checking your messages, and you get a message saying that Bill is dead, you're like, I'm like, wow. Like, it all, it, 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 it put it all on me at one time, like, man, this is so, this is so bad. Spice One is on my text messages, right? And this is his text, text message at seven fifty-one, that same morning, what's that say?
You want me to read it?
Yeah, you can read it.
Because I don't know if you know, but Bill is in Denver, and Extra Large just hit me and said, "He's not gonna make it, man." Then he goes, "Fuck." I, I, you told me to read it, shaking my head.
And then my response was-
Shit.
Terrible.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I get that from two people that's-
Close.
Very. So I called my DJ, called Will, called James, you know, called Chief, called Ant, called, said, "Man, we lost Bill, bruh." So we, we put up our condolences and let the rest of the world know that we lost Bill. And then I get another, um, uh, Instagram post saying that he not dead. So which one is it? Right? I know Oki is his-
Right-hand man.
All right, and I know his dad told Oki that he passed. And, um, bruh, that was cold. And like, that's, that, that, that right there, man. Anyway, um, Bill's organs has shut down from what I understand, man, and they say he went peacefully. And that's a good thing. You know, he wasn't suffering. But, you know, I used to live with Bill, bruh. And, um, I always said, "If I never seen Bill ever again in life, it'll be way too soon." Because we lived in the same house, man, and it was like, that was just too much Bill. Imagine being around Bill for twenty-four hours a day, it's just too much Bill, man. Um, I'm sure everybody got some good Bushwick stories, I probably have the best.
Right.
Because we stayed in the same house, but, um-
So were y'all going on tour, that last tour?
No, we could never come up with, um, the right-
Pay system, money?
No, it wasn't about money at that point.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't about the money. It was about the, the title. And Bill wanted it to say, "Fuck cancer." And it didn't matter to me what the title was, all right? But it was the end of The Ghetto Boys as we knew it. So it was, that was Ghetto Boys, it was over. Like, that was the beginning of a long goodbye with The Ghetto Boys, with me. Like, regardless, if Bill would still, uh, live to be a hundred and seventy-five years old, I'm still gone.
Right.
So I was done. Like, I'm not Ghetto Boys, I'm not doing that no more.
You're not, oh, so you-
That was, that was gonna be the end of that group. That was gonna be the last time that you got a chance to see us together for the last time. Um, Bill made it about him. Will refused to make it about Bill. And I didn't give a damn one way or the other. All right? So, when you hear people saying that, that they just trying to capitalize off of Bill or whatever, like, I don't never go out on Ghetto Boys, Merritt, or none of that, I don't never use that name, that's not my name to use. I'm just playing no faith. And I've been touring, you know, by myself.
Right.
So I don't want nobody to feel like we was trying to use Bill
To make money.
To make money, cause-
Right, right.
I've been on the same tour for the past four years, like, y'all might not know that.
No, I keep up.
Okay, well, I've been on the same tour for four years. Yeah, don't get all jealous and shit, man, you know what's up.
But since we are here, I got some, uh, a lot of those songs. What songs did you write of Bills during those times back in the day? Because I like to go back and listen to see if I can hear that you wrote the songs, or Willie D. I know Willie D wrote some.
You trying to get at Mind Playing Tricks.
I know, I already know he wrote Mind Playing Tricks.
I didn't, I didn't write Will's verse on Mind Playing Tricks.
But he put that in his book.
Yeah. I, I, Bill, Bill got a song called "I Just Wanna Die". I wrote that.
Wow, that's deep.
Yeah.
How did you get into that perspective and write that?
I mean, just in talking to the, you know, he, man, Bill is wild, bro.
You think he was the wildest ghetto boy?
No, by far.
Oof, what a toss-up.
Man, that's crazy.
Willie D, Face. And then, you know, I, I never asked you this as it relates to the other Ghetto Boys. Was there any, at any time, had there ever been any, excuse me, problems amongst, because the other ones might feel like they're the originals, they the real ones, they the this, they the that. I don't know if there was ever any of those problems that you guys faced.
Say that again, what, what?
Because there was different, there was different parts of The Ghetto Boys. You got The Ghetto Boys when it's the, the G-H-E-T-T-O Boys. You know, there's different-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, and then I'm gonna be done with that.
Okay.
So just play the records. Compare the records. Yeah, okay, I'm done.
Okay.
You want me to finish?
We already know, we listened to the records.
Man, Face ain't wild.
Okay, will that be another book? Because your book was a bestseller, will it be another book? I like the book.
I mean, I might, I might, uh, document this movement right here.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Face, you wild.
How am I wild?
Would you run for mayor?
You're just mean. You had to say that like that, listen to the records and see, we know.
I was trying to lay it down, thinking of that.
No, no, I know, that's why I stopped you, you mean.
How am I mean?
That's mean.
I, no, listen, that's not-
There was different phases of The Ghetto Boys. Okay, go ahead.
What I was gonna say, man, I don't know why you trying to hold me in the light of such a bad guy.
Okay, you right, you sure right, Councilman, I'm sorry.
Listen to the records, compare, compare, compare the records. And then compare the sales of those records.
Like I said, do I know the guy or what?
And then, and, and then we can debate on, you know-
But somebody could say it was just y'all time, maybe.
Nah, well, it's been our time for a long time, man.
Okay, Face, we know that you guys are iconic.
No, I'm not saying that, Hatta, stop, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm just saying, dog, like, like, we can say, yo, let's go to Bad Back Africa and jam. And we can go do that.
Right.
Can you go to Bad Back Africa and jam?
Face, you wild, man. Okay, I'm done with that, I'm done with that. Yes, you guys are iconic, though.
I didn't say that, I just said it wouldn't go to nope.
Bill being the most different of the crew, though, that's debatable amongst the people that you ask, because they know all of y'all. And that's what made The Ghetto Boys, The Ghetto Boys, that all of you have very defined personalities, you all still do. God bless, uh, R.I.P. Bushwick, but you all have very distinct personalities from day one.
So as my friend since nineteen ninety-two. Not you.
I know, I ain't your friend.
At all.
But I do know your lyrics, and you're one of my favorite artists.
That's a lie, Tupac's your favorite, man, can you cut this off?
You are a god-dog it. Like I said, god-dog it.
Trust me, he can, he can, he can quote the lyrics. He knew that there was a song, he know that on one of your records, that there's some quote that you did about some girl eating, excuse me, because, because Jazz has some booty-eating fetish, and Jay Mack said, "Yeah, Face got a song", but, no, 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 stop, listen, stop, listen. On one of your songs, you mentioned, is it Quickie? Mack said, Mack went, Mack went right, Mack went right to it. "Oh, yeah, Face on one of his songs, he says blah, 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 blah."
You like my boots.
So that's how you know how hardcore J Mack is.
He's like, I've seen him in the house for a long time.
I'm saying that, one, to document that J Mack is real about what he's saying. And I know you just giving him a hard time because that's what you do, but two, yeah, Jazz did say that.
I've been knowing Jazz since she was like eight years old, so for her to say-
So he doesn't want to hear about it. But you've been talking about this for a long time.
Y'all really get ready to take it, we was having a serious moment, y'all get ready to take it here, I'm done.
Hey, hey, Hatta, wait. Hey, man, I'm running for public office, man, the last thing I want to be talking about is-
I'm in Jordan here.
Ass eating.
Oh, man, that's, that's crushing, that's gonna be a good-
The ass argument's over, it's been a long time, man. It's nothing new.
If you want any references, just go listen to the song Quickie.
Have it. Nah, man, take that shit out.
Wow.
Say that nigga running for county, he's eating ass.
Aw, nobody said that.
Don't even, uh, nobody.
To not have a factor, Scarface talks about eating ass. Isaiah Carey, what Scarface is.
Stop it, stop it, y'all took, no, go back, I want you to go back, because you said that, to you, of all, of all the wild ghetto boys, Bill was probably the wildest.
Oh.
Why, why so, in your opinion? Because it's interesting to hear somebody who's lived this life, because to all of us, we all know these individuals. And like I said, they all stick out like sore thumbs. Will, Bush, and this one.
So one time, like, we hungry as hell. It's me, Bill, and Beto. We living on corporate, walk to stop and go, right?
Wow, corporate.
Yeah. I walk up to the, to the, to the counter, here's the counter. I'm talking to the lady, right? Bill go to the cooler, he grab two twelve packs. And Bill walk up under here.
You stupid.
Out the door. With the beer, all right? So we got two twelve packs. Cool. So Bill order, we call the pizza man. So, the way we lived, it, it had like a door, a bush, you know, and, and like a divider, and then another door to the other place. So Bill called the pizza man to go to the apartment next door. Pizza man got there, he standing outside, he said, "Hold up", he grabbed the pizza, walked in the bushes, behind the, walked, walked in the bushes, behind the, the gate, and came in the apartment and locked the door. Our boy was knocking on the people's door.
Wow.
Yeah, bought the pizza, yeah, we had, so we had two twelve packs and some pizza.
Wow.
That nobody paid for.
Nobody. Bill could jump out of a two-story window. For real. One time, Johnny C had a, got a brother, well, had a brother, rest in peace, Wadoo. But Johnny C's brother and Bill, and Bill had a fight. And I was trying to break the fight up. Bill had a box cutter.[1655.98] And I grabbed Bill's hand, and I say, bro, you don't wanna kill, you don't wanna do this. Bill took the box cutter, twisted his hand, and cut my, then they cut my thumb off.
Wow.
Almost cut my thumb off, okay? So I stood in front of the door and say, Bill, we not gonna do this, man. Bill went to, he, he went to his room and jumped out of the window from the second story, and all you heard was outside, like it shook the apartments, he hit the ground so hard.
Wow, he was the craziest.
Can't make this up.
All of y'all were very, I don't even know how, on tours, how y'all all got alone, because, like I said,
We did not get alone.
I was about to ask.
We don't get along.
How did y'all, how did y'all make it, how did y'all make it for so long? Because like, I'm glad you, and, and you know, well
We did not make it for so long.
I'm glad, because, you know, a lot of people never ask y'all guys, but y'all, why was it that you guys could not get along? Just too different?
I don't know.
Just too different?
I don't know. I, I
But isn't that what made the group, what the group was, though?
I think that we might have, well, not me, but I think that some people may have took the Ghetto Boys too serious, and thought it was maybe them that were fueling the Ghetto Boys, you know what I mean? When all in all, this was just a idea that James had in his head, you know? I mean, it's crazy.
So for you, it never was that serious?
I didn't come in as Ghetto Boys, I came in as a solo rapper.
That was always your mindset?
That's always my mindset.
Even with the success of Ghetto Boys?
Always my mindset.
So does that mean you didn't care about Ghetto Boys, or it was just whatever?
It wasn't about that I didn't care, but I knew that that wasn't my final destination, if that makes any sense. Like, that wasn't my final destination. Like, I wanted to do something by myself as DJ Action. I wanted to be like the, the coldest rapper DJ to ever, you know, I wanted to be colder than the General. Wanted to kill him on some cuts.
People don't know about that.
He laughing.
He laughing a lot.
I'm, I
What about Blaster, you wanted to kill Blaster?
Blaster was my DJ.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but yeah, I could, I could kill Blaster.
Oh, God.
After Jam Master J, it's the real truth.
Nah, I was trying to scratch y'all, bro. I'm messing with y'all. Blaster was my DJ growing up in junior high school.
You went to Ridge?
I did. That's, that's, no, he went to Mo City.
He went to a different school than y'all?
No, we all went to the same school.
Oh, Little Ridge, yeah.
When I left Woodson, I went to Mo City. And then when I, when, when, uh, when I got, uh, to the ninth grade, I was catching the bus, I was catching the thirty-culling to the seventy-three Belfort.
I know it.
To the sixty-eight Bissonnet. And then it'll drop us off down by Christie McCullough, and then I walk to school every day. From the hood, yeah. Whole blade.
When Ghetto Boys getting, first getting put together, Face, did, because you know, every time people talk about the group now, and you, the word icon is used, in your mind at that time, could you have seen yourself or that group? No.
No.
Where, did you ever hope to have been the successful MC that you've become?
Say that again?
You're a, a icon. Did you hope to be what you have become? Like, everybody wants to be the hardest MC.
I don't know.
Do you dream yourself, Rakim, you know, it's a fair question, he have dreamed to be who he is, you understand what I'm saying? Because when most MCs talk about their favorite MCs, most of those MCs name who?
Rakim.
No, they name you. Yeah, Rakim is a favorite, no doubt about it, but most of those other MCs, they always name, because MCs have favorites, and your name always pops up. Your MC's usual favorite MC.
I like, I like, I like, I like
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I get it.
So do you ever, in your head, have you ever said to yourself, did you ever said to yourself, I want to be X, X great?
I, I like to
Or you just happy how, how things turned out?
I like the idea of being great. But did I, did I feel like I, did I think that I was gonna be great back then when I was a kid? I didn't know. That, that, that part of it never crossed my mind, you know? But I always wanted to be great, am I great?
You gonna have to be the top five.
Then I, then, 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 then I appreciate that, but I don't, I don't, I don't, you know, inside looking out at Face, I don't feel like I'm all that great. You know?
Come on.
Like, no, it's, 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 listen, man.
We getting ready to end the end.
No, yeah, we
Y'all, 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 it just, you know you great.
We can, we can
You know you're great.
We can end it, but like I said in my book, man, when it, when it, when it came to my career, man, I missed out on a lot.
Now, you said that.
Yeah, I missed out on a lot. I missed my kids growing up, I missed, you know, I, 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 I
But ain't that because you moving too fast, so you don't see, you don't understand what's going on?
I missed a lot.
Yeah.
I missed a lot. And it, and it's, and it's, and it's, it's, I can't make that time back up. You feel me? Like, that was thirty years ago.
Yes, sir.
You know, I got kids that's thirty. You know what I mean? So it's, it's, it's no making that time up. So, yeah, I mean, as, as, as great of an artist that Brad is, Brad still hit some humps along the way. Like, you remember that, when I decided I didn't wanna rap no more, I didn't wanna, you know? I go through those crazy stages in my life where I don't, I don't, I don't wanna rap, I don't want no money, I just want people to leave me alone.
I never thought you were motivated by the money, because I was like, he's missing on, out on so much money. What motivates you at all? Cause I, I never thought it was the money, from the very beginning. I was like, man, this dude could get more money. Because, because he is this icon.
A lot of rappers are motivated by money and trying to get to the next level with the money.
Being a billionaire.
Or whatever. I don't think he's ever been motivated by the money like that.
That's a fair question.
What motivates you?
What motivated, what motivated me?
Yeah.
Was me knowing that, excuse me, me knowing that any rapper that I ever came face to face with, I would annihilate.
Wow.
Annihilate.
So being on those songs, that's with Jay-Z and Nas, how did you go in there? Did you go in there?
With, with, with the idea of chilling you.
Wow.
But Nas resisted.
Now, I've heard you say before that, you know, you, you running with
Who is this? Mister Lani's voice, like, ta-da.
Trust him, that's the way we feeling, we're gonna dress that after you're gone, but, but for now, we gonna, since the camera's on, and it's happening.
It's a podcast.
No, 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 you know, you know
Cameraman, you can get in on this too, shoot.
Yeah, go ahead, jumped in, just jumped in.
You run with Kanye, you run with Jay-Z, but you had the desire to be normal, just to be normal, is that still the?
Yeah, I didn't wanna, I didn't, I didn't wanna alienate myself with my success. You know, I didn't wanna be alienated from my people. You know, from my success, if that makes sense, like, you can't, like, I don't go outside, like, I mean, I don't have nobody with me.
Right.
Right.
Alright, I'm not really
We know you Face, but you feel like you can be a regular guy.
I'm, I'm regular.
I've been DJing at the spot in Third Ward, and he just roll up in there, just chilling, by his damn self.
I mean, but that's always been Face, and I guess that was, Mack is not complaining, he was just always confused by your refusal
To, to, to have twenty bodyguards and
Well, not even that, just he just, and I think we all feel that way, that this is a guy that we are putting you there saying, he should be there. But you're saying, that's cool, but I wanna be here
I'm fine with this.
Where, where you are.
I'm fine with where I am, yeah.
Do what I do with my kids, I wanna go play some golf, because I know that's all you crazy about is playing golf, and now being a councilman.
I like the idea of playing golf, and, and being a councilman.
And, and, and I have to ask this, so does this mean that, because you say you up and down with it, does this mean that the rap career is now done?
I, if
Winnie wins, I guess, if, for a little bit.
Even if you win, they probably still, I won't, I won't be mad at the album still.
When I, when I, when I, when I, um, when I take the, uh, when I take my councilman seat, I'm done. I'll have my eyes set on being a mayor, I'll have my eyes set on being a governor, I'll have my eyes being set on being, but let me just start it at, at councilman, state rep, uh, mayor, um,
So this is long-term from here on out?
Yeah, I'm gonna go into politics.
Okay.
Alright, senator, congress, like, like I'm coming.
Alright.
Alright, I feel like it's a lot of laws that, that, that need to be, um, I don't even know about amendment, I, I think like fault, but I like the amendment part, that, that, that's a diplomatic way of saying that somebody fucked up. You know, they didn't get it right the first time, you feel me? Good idea. So yes, a lot of laws, man, that, that, that don't make sense. You know, you already got, uh, uh, four hundred, your head start on me, and you steady put shit in the way to make it four hundred more years, like, it's time to start getting those barriers, barricades out of the way now.
Okay, I respect that.
Alright, I'm, I'm, I'm human, you human, you human, you human, you human, you're not, and that's cool. Fine with this.
Mack, your relationship is always interesting with everyone.
Nah, 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 with me.
This is our relationship, and it always has been.
Right. But Face, this is me and your relationship, and it always has been.
And we cool.
We are, but we've always had an interest
We're not. Shut up.
And we're cool. And I'm cool.
Y'all cool, not being cool.
I seen him at Papa, though, I speak to his kids, I see him at a couple of schools, that's how we roll.
But when we get on radio, we sworn into means. Outside of here, man, we good.
But let me tell you how I started.
No.
I started small time dope game, cocaine, prison rock, on the block, I'm never broke, I'm a boy jury, and the stuff that came rolling hard, you try to school me.
See how y'all bucked up on me?
No regard.
See how you bucked up on me? You know I got a gun, right?
Hey, man, Brad is going to try to be your district for council, what, District D?
Yes, sir.
So we will be seeing his face and him a lot in the public, and him doing things for the community. Yes, Coop?
Uh, Mr. Jordan, you got a website people can visit to find out the platform and everything?
I do, it's, uh, Bradford District D, W W W dot Bradford District D dot com. And I also wanna put out there that this race is in November. This election is in November, I'm sorry. So if you can click that donate button and send me between ten and five thousand dollars, no, ten dollars and five thousand dollars.
Oh, my goodness.
That's the range, from ten dollars to five thousand dollars, okay? It's tax deductible. Fuck with your boy.